The meeting is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafchak?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Kate McCallie Herald on January 4th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start work session with public safety.
And as always, we start with the court administrator.
Afternoon. As normal, I have nothing to tell you.[67.06][67.06](Laughter). A good story. A good story. I'm not allowed to tell my stories out of court.
You're competent. Good job.[76.11][76.11](Laughter).
Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Okay, moving right along.[82.11][82.11](Laughter). Thank you, Debbie. Chief Stanford.
Wish I could say the same. Report for July, we had 43 fire calls, 93 EMS calls. I'm not going to bore you with the statistics of every call, but we had, they included four building fires, two surf rescues, and one search for a person in the water. Luckily, all the calls for those services were out of our town. So, you may have noticed the siren has been blowing a lot, which it always does in July and August. I know we've been feeling some complaints about the siren, which we do every year in July and August because of the number of calls, so.
Could you explain to us, Roger, again, what the sirens are set at now? Which ones blow daylight?
Currently, the sirens for fires between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, all the sirens blow, which we have four sirens, 117th, 106th, 96th, and 81st Street. During the nighttime hours, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, only the 96th Street siren blows. We did have a complaint that the siren was activated at 117th Street during the night, so I sent an email to the person in charge at county dispatch, because the only way it could happen is a mistake by the dispatcher hitting the wrong tone. They assure me it won't happen again, so.
And didn't you lessen the length of the siren also, correct?
We've done numerous things over the years. The latest is we went from five, what we call whales, it would blow five times, to one whale. So it only activates one time for fire calls. So, anything else?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Lifeguard captain.
Good afternoon. In the past month, we've had 14 rescues, six EMS calls, five lost children were found. We're getting to that time of the year where by the next meeting, we will be pretty much closed up, I would assume. We will be protecting the beaches through Labor Day weekend like we always do, and then hopefully, we will continue to have some beaches open after Labor Day, and the exact number, if we have any, or the exact number will be depending on how many guards are still available, because most of them are, they go back to college. And that people are encouraged to call the headquarters and ask where the guards are or on duty as we get later in the year. That's my report.
But what's been the impact of that new, the new bonus structure that we put in place this summer?
I had the guards tell us when their last day will be and if they return Labor Day weekend from school, and it's about four or five more people per day. So it actually is turning out to be, it's not dramatic, but it's significant, you know? It's enough that, it's about what I figured it would be. Everyone just sort of, they stretch out the summer a few more days, and when everyone does that and they leave at different times, it helps. It really does help. It allows us to have another stand or two open every day.
Sandy, do you see any difference in the riptide this year?
The ocean is, I sensed the storm a few weeks ago, that when we had the hard northeast wind for that 24-hour period, it caused a lot of erosion, and until it settles down, it does seem like the break is, it's a steeper crashing wave, and there are more riptides.
I was with somebody last evening from CO, and they had two drownings in ankle-length, ankle-high water, and one was aboard that hit, because of the erosion, hit like an embankment, and they hurt their neck, fell off, unconscious and drowned.
You could see the difference the day after the storm immediately, once it calmed down, but it should.
I'm happy to hear that we don't have any incidents. Sandy, has the incentive for the beach taggers proved to be making them more aggressive?
I believe so. The, I just checked as of today, we were on track until last week when we had the rainy, we've had a few more rain days than last year, and so it's like, it was ahead of last year up until last week, and it's just slightly under as of right now, but it's obvious when you look at the weather, I think that one was on a Saturday, which is a drastic change. But it does seem to be working. Overall, the number of tags sold seems to be spread out. You don't have people that are selling everything and then other people that are really unproductive. Seems to have been more encouraging to the whole, to the group as a whole.
Well, that was what you wanted.
Right.
Well, we'll be able to get numbers, Jim, correct?
Yes.
End of the year?
Oh, yeah.
And someone told me, and I apologize, because I can't remember who, but the taggers were being overly aggressive in some cases. That, you know, it's like, where's your tag? Come back in half an hour, and where's your tag? You know, so hopefully, that's a good sign.
I think they're doing a good job. It's a difficult job. They're teenagers, and they're out all day dealing with hundreds or thousands of people. So I think it's improved.
I would like to go on to the police chief, but so the two of you basically can address this together. At the last committee meeting, we talked about the tents and the rowdiness and additional enforcement to quell that. And so how's that, how's that working?
I, I'm pretty, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I know they're visibly, you know, it's noticeable that they're down there more, and we're, we've been pressing a little more, too.
The police or the tents? The police are down there more, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the tents already peaked.
Because you, in your last month's report, said that there was 11, I think, incidents where you needed police assistance on the beach, was, I believe, was reported last month? And this, zero? Did I miss it?
I think there were 11 disturbances, and we called the police for two.
Oh, okay.
I don't have that, but this, this month, they, we didn't have to call the police. We were able to, there were a number of people that were approached about getting alcohol off the beach.
Okay.
But they cooperated, so.
Any other questions for Captain LaSaca?
No questions, but I wanted to say thank you personally and from my family for the mascot races. My children had the pleasure of competing in them. It was so well-run. Your lifeguard crew was amazing. Couldn't have been better with all of the kids. It was just, it's just one of those events that really separates Stone Harbor from other towns, and it's really, really a pleasure.
It was nice.
We enjoy that. It's fun, all the guards.
It was fantastic.
The three Krafchak children all walked away with medals.
Medals, I remember.[567.29][567.29](Laughter).
Yeah. One of them walked away with two. And it was first place in both, the surf dash and the sprint. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was great. It was great. Good work by all. Everybody seemed to really enjoy it. The guards were as into it as the kids.
They enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Monthly report for July for the police department, there were 263 motor vehicle stops, 10 adults were arrested. In terms of training, we didn't send anyone to training during the month of July. We try to keep that to a minimum, if at all, during the summer season. In terms of Stone Harbor Point, we continue to conduct the patrols. Captain Palmer is in contact with Ms. Tedesco periodically. He hasn't advised me of any issues down that area. We haven't had any emergency patrol responses down there or anything in the month of July. In terms of personnel, we're fully staffed for the moment. We will have two officers leaving for recruit training at the end of the month at the police academy, so we'll do a little finagling with scheduling here and there, but that's in terms of personnel, we're good. Building update, Captain Palmer and I met with the architects, the engineer, Ms. Goucher, and the public safety committee, and pleased to announce we reviewed the final plans, and you'll see a presentation tonight on another proposed building, so very excited about that. Otherwise, that was it for the month.
Following on from what Sandy had said, so the, any additional enforcement on the beach?
We're down there.
You're down there. Okay, you're waving the badge.
Yes, it's kind of tough, I guess, you know, that people see a big white SUV coming down the beach, and it might go from here to right in the cooler, so maybe that has something to do with, you know, with the lack of visibility of it, you know, I don't know.
Well, then it's working.
But yet, in some respect, it's working. You know, we are down there more than we were, that's for sure, and the lifeguard's been helping out tremendously, so.
Down the beach at a safe speed, right?
Yes. Thank you.
Good.
Any questions for Chief Shoda? Thank you.
Good, good.
That concludes the public safety portion of this program.
Do we want to do the building now?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll turn it over to Engineer Ray.
It'll be Architect Jerry and Engineer Ray. We do have the final floor plans and site plans for you to look at this afternoon. Jerry's getting ready at this point in time. I'm going to be turning it over to Jerry as he steps back here. We'll go through the site plan and the floor plans and the elevations. As you'll recall, our directive was to design a single-story police station and try and have a budget of $3.7 million. What you'll see now is that single-story station. One of the key elements in that was to provide a drive-through Sallyport, where if you remember, the original two-story was a backup, so we're able to accomplish that, and we'll go over some of the other changes for you as we go through the slides.
Okay, the first image that you're going to see is a perspective rendering of the proposed police station. This is a view from 95th Street, and we're looking approximately towards the southwest. On the left side of the slide, you see that there is a paved area, which will be a connector between 95th Street and the existing borough parking lot. Off of that paved area, we will have two parallel parking spaces adjacent to the building for police vehicles, and where you do see the one police vehicle, that is the entry into the Sallyport. There is another door on the opposite wall from the door that you see in this rendering. As Ray had mentioned, you will, police officers will be able to pull in one side of the Sallyport, either from the borough parking lot or 95th Street, and exit the other side, you know, and travel towards 95th Street or the borough parking lot, depending on which way the vehicle's pointing. What you can see in the image is to the right of the police vehicle, there's another garage door, which leads into a vehicle storage area. It could be utilized for storage, it could be utilized for an impounded vehicle if a search for evidence is needed, to where they can actually pull it into a controlled environment, close the door, secure it. There's also a small fenced area in there that I'll show you on the plan that can be used for impound of larger items, like maybe bicycles or things like that. The main entrance to the police station, the main public entrance, is off 95th Street. There's a ramp and stairs that lead up to the main entrance. The main entrance is marked by the two police globe lighting fixtures. Immediately upon entering the police station, you're in a secured lobby. Unless you're escorted or you're buzzed in, you wouldn't be, the public would not be able to travel any further than that main entrance lobby. We are proposing a building with materials like the existing municipal building, in that we're using face brick, we're utilizing a cast stone band as an accent at approximately windowsill height, some flat arches with keystones, which are present on windows for the existing building, and just some other detailing, you know, that we see on the existing building. What does differ on the, on the police station, though, is that we do have pitched roofs, which are only present on the front portion of the municipal building, the portion that's closest to Second Avenue. Behind the flat or the pitched roofs, there is an area that's flat, and it's in that area that we're proposing to locate a generator and also a rooftop HVAC unit, which, you know, as best we can, we're going to be screening from the street with these pitched roofs. Just to give a little bit of context, this slide will be brief. The new police station building addition is proposed to the east side of the existing police station in what is an existing parking lot now. There is a one-story Sallyport that's attached to the existing police station that would be demolished. The existing two-story portion of the police station would remain. The remainder of the area that the new building addition would occupy is parking spaces, drive aisle, miscellaneous shed, things like that. The flat area in the roof, you can kind of see a sort of a white rectangle in the middle of the, of the proposed addition. To the east of the proposed addition, you can see the drive that we're proposing between 95th Street and the, and the existing borough parking lot. There are some areas that we're proposing to be yellow striped, in which case, they could be utilized for parking of police vehicles, but we're not suggesting that they're used for parking by the public or other borough employees. I guess Ray can go through a little bit more once we get to the site plan as to what the net changes on parking spaces with what we're proposing. Okay, this is the proposed site plan.
May I ask you a question as we go along, or do you want to wait?
No, that's fine.
I'm a little confused about the existing parking lot. How many spaces are you actually going to have for the public and for employees?
Okay, I'll let Ray handle that.
Forty-five available slots?
We had, we had more when we had the two-story, because we didn't have a drive-through. We have the drive-through now, and if you see the drive-through coming from 95th down, you'll see that there's a crosshatched area to the right. That used to be two parking spaces, but for traffic to come through from 95th to 96th, the car will have to make a little S-turn. That is only for police vehicles to go through there, and so we're showing that so that they can make their S-curve to be able to leave on to 96th Street.
So out of those parking spaces, you're saying they're only designated for the public and borough employees, like it's not for police, it's not for?
Well, police, police are, police are going to have parking spaces on 95th Street, all right? And there will be two parking spaces along the side of the building as you enter the driveway from 95th, and then for short-term, the narrow crosshatched piece across the back of the parking lot there, that would be where if they had to come in for a short period of time and then leave, that's where they would park.
Okay.
And the rest of the parking would be for the library and for the public.
Because I noticed the spaces behind the library and behind the building now are totally taken.
Yes, yes.
Completely. In fact, employees can't even park anymore.
Yeah. The thing is, you have, especially today with the, with the rain, you've got a tremendous amount of people using the library. It's a library day today.
All right, thank you.
Okay. But again, the only big difference here has been the drive-through aisle was added, and a couple of spaces were removed. Other than that, it basically is the same layout that we had when we had the one-story. One thing we did do is we made sure that we had handicap accessibility spaces, both next to the library ramp, which is on 96th, and also closer to Borough Hall for those entering Borough, Borough Hall. So you can see those in there with the little crosshatching. Those are the aisleways for the handicap parking. We are putting in a new sidewalk in front of the building, 95th Street. Our firm has designed improvements for 95th Street. We believe those improvements will be in place prior to the police facility being completed, so therefore, any work in the streets such as sanitary service, water service, any drainage will be done under the 95th Street contract, and then we will just take our onsite utilities and just connect them at that point in time. And those utilities will also include the electric conduit coming across the street to serve the building as well. So everything underground in 95th will be installed under that contract, and we will just be plugging in. Any other questions on the site? If not, that's you, Jerry.
Okay, this is a floor plan of the proposed police department. It's going to be a little bit light and maybe difficult to see. 95th Street, just to orient you, 95th Street's on the right side of this slide. The borough parking lot is on the left side. What we are proposing is the first floor of the police station. We continue to be used by the police as an approximate area of 3,100 square feet. The proposed new building addition is about 5,800 square feet, so the total police department is going to be about, a little, a shade under 8,900 square feet, whereas they're utilizing 60, about 6,100 square feet now, so we're proposing an increase in the police department of about 2,800 square feet, 46 percent. The portion of the existing building on the first floor that's going to be utilized by the police department will contain their locker rooms, a staff, or not staff, a, a training room, a larger meeting room, bathrooms associated with the locker rooms, evidence storage, and then other equipment storage. And then the building addition itself will be constructing new holding cells. The existing holding cells will be demolished, new booking area, administrative offices, as well as interview rooms, a squad room for the officers, and an area just to the left of the main, the main public entry as sort of a report-taking area, that if you did have a person that wanted to file a, a member of the public wanted to file a report, they really don't have to go any further than the public lobby. An officer could meet them, you know, at the entrance into the secured portion of the police station, and then via a secured window, they could communicate with the member of the public. There'd be a countertop there that they could fill out paperwork and such. So as little as possible, we're trying to keep the public out of the secured portion of the police station. The main public lobby, we are setting up as a, for lack of a better word, an area of refuge. If you did have an emergency where you felt you were in danger, you could actually enter the main public lobby to the police station, communicate with either an officer that is there at administration or picking up an emergency phone to communicate with dispatch, have the door locked, and then have two-way communication with either an officer or a member of dispatch. The door and the windows surrounding it will be bullet resistant, you know, as well as storm resistant. We'll have cameras in the main public lobby and so forth as well. After officer is able to assist, you know, a member of the public could be led into the secured portion of the police station if, you know, reports had to be filed or interview needed to be conducted. The drive-through Sallyport appears on the bottom in the left corner of the plan. In previous schemes, we had proposed a Sallyport in which you would enter on one side and leave through the same side, so in order to leave, you would have to back your vehicle out of the Sallyport, and because of the elevation of the first floor of the building relative to grade, you would not only have to back out a garage door, but also down a ramp in order to get the vehicle out of Sallyport. We had explored the possibilities of things like turntable, to turn the vehicle around inside the Sallyport so you could leave frontwards instead of backwards. It just wasn't an efficient option. All things being said, it's better if you can pull in one side and leave through the other side. So in the present scheme, we have incorporated that, that traffic movement. The, the first floor of the building is going to be elevated above grade, approximately two feet. We've elevated the first floor to elevation 11. The base flood elevation is nine, and we've added the two feet of freeboard from the Stone Harbor flood hazard prevention ordinances. It ends up four inches above the level of the first floor of the existing police station, so where we do have connections between the existing and new police station, we'll provide short ramps in order to maintain accessibility between the two areas. The, we have two holding cells proposed in the present plan. There are two holding cells now. What is not present in the existing police station is a separate juvenile holding area, which we are proposing in the, in the current scheme. It's adjacent to the squad room. If you did have a juvenile to be detained, it's best to separate them from any adult detainees that might also be in the police station. So in the event that if there was an adult being processed in the booking area of the police station, it would be possible that another officer could bring a juvenile into the vehicle storage area and then enter the police station through a door and into the juvenile holding area, and that could be maintained or monitored from the squad room. The shift commander will have an office located in the processing booking area with windows to be able to see what's going on. There's also going to be a desk for officers to work at within the booking area. We, as best we could, maintained a short, straight traffic movement from Sallyport to booking area to holding cells, and then located as close as we could, shift commander and squad room, if there was an emergency in the booking area, if somebody was brought in that was being arrested and an emergency situation ensued, that you could have a faster response from other officers in the building. Questions on the floor plan? Okay. The remaining slides were building elevations of the proposed building. This is facing 95th Street. The proposed building addition is to the peak of the pitch roof, approximately the same height of the existing police station. The existing police station had a very low floor-to-floor height, first to second floor. In the proposed building addition, we actually created more space on the first floor by elevating the top of plate before we start our roof bearing. That enables us to be able to put in ceilings and have enough space to put in ductwork and communication cables and all of those sorts of things that you try as best you can to locate above ceiling and out of, out of view. It was difficult to do in the existing police station. Hopefully, it'll be much easier with what reduced function we have in the, in the first floor area that's being reused, and certainly we'll have enough space in the building addition for routing those, those types of utilities above ceiling. We're, as I said, utilizing similar materials to what's on the existing police station. We are seeking to maintain the existing main police department. We are seeking to maintain the existing main police department entry. It's on the right side of this slide. There is, right on the other side of that door and flanking windows is the, the break room and a large meeting room. The existing ramp that leads up to the main entrance of the existing police station will be demolished. We are retaining the stairs, and that is really going to be just a police-only entrance. If you wanted to, you know, say, park your vehicle on Ninety-Fifth Street, pop into the police station for a quick use of the bathroom, something along those lines, you can do that, you know, at the, what is the existing police department entry now without having to traverse the whole police department going in the main public entrance. Also, if you were, if you were there for your shift and you wanted to get changed and have sort of a short, direct access towards the locker rooms, you could do that utilizing that existing police entry as well. So as much as possible, we're, we're also not only separating the secured areas of the police department from, from public entry, also trying to minimize, I guess, the actual movement of police officers within the building with the public. You know, it can be a, a bit uncomfortable, I guess, if you have a few people in the public lobby, officers coming in to either use the building or, or entering or leaving when their shift begins or is over. We're trying to separate that, that movement as well. And this would be the, the view of the police station facing the existing Borough parking lot. To the right is the door leading into the Sally Port. There's a, a garage door, also a man door. The man door would be police access only. To the left on this slide, where we have the stairway and you can see the railing, that's an existing door and stairway and railing, which provides access for the, the municipal court judge to gain access to their judge's chamber. It also acts as a, a means of egress for the second floor of the, of the police, or the existing police station and the southern portion of the second floor, which is utilized for other functions. This was the last slide that I had. This would be the building elevation facing the east, towards your, your condominium neighbors. The, the slope portion on the right of the slide, I think gives you a good idea as to what the level change is between the existing sidewalk elevation at Ninety-Fifth Street, which would be to the right, and the floor elevation inside the building. The garage door that you see enters into the vehicle's storage area. That's the same floor elevation as the remainder of the police station, the building addition portion of the police station. The gabled roof to the right, right in the middle, there's a, a door that would also be police access only. It provides access to the administrative areas of the police department. The window, the windows with the lower sill that you see are actually the, the chief and captain's offices on the other side of the wall. And the two parking spaces I had mentioned, that would be parallel to the building onsite, are right there located by those, those offices. We have some higher sill windows just to give some light into the, the Sally Port, also to the vehicle's storage area as well. And then off to the left of the, the slide, you can see there is a, a steeper grade, which would be a ramp leading out of the Sally Port and down to the Borough parking lot. And that would only be, that would be a vehicle-only ramp. The right, the other ramp, the portion that connects Ninety-Fifth Street from the, from the municipal parking lot, if I remember correctly, Ray, we're looking at about an eight percent pitch. It might even be, you know, as little as five percent in, in some portions of that. Certainly an area that, that you could walk, you know, from one side to the other if you wanted to. Yes, it could also be not only a vehicle connection between Ninety-Fifth Street and the parking lot, but you could actually walk through there, and it's not too steep a grade. That was the last slide that I had to, to present, if there was any questions.
I guess the big question is the starting date and completion date.
Okay, I'll let Ray handle that.
Okay, I promised you some cost information, so we'll get into that first. When we were asked to do the redesign of the single-story utilizing the portion of the existing police station, we're given a budget of three point seven million dollars. We went through, did our design, had several design group meetings, making what we believe were reasonable cuts in materials, et cetera, as we designed this building, and we came up with a opinion of probable construction cost of three point nine million. We also looked at how we could get from the three point seven to the three point nine. And the items that we were able to identify were pretty much those items that were first cost low, maintenance cost high. So that, for instance, if you decided to use siding instead of brick, you can imagine the maintenance costs in taking care of the siding. But in all those things that we looked at, we figured we could probably say maybe a hundred thousand of that two hundred thousand. So at this point in time, our opinion of probable construction cost is three point nine million. So that's one thing that the council will have to discuss to see if we proceed with this. If we decide to proceed with the design as it is, we would be looking for a resolution to advertise for bids on August twenty-sixth. Now, this is going to be a two-stage program in that we are going to keep the existing police station operational while we put the addition in. Once we have the addition in, we'll transfer out of the existing building, and then we'll have our contractor go to the inside of the existing building and do that. So that when we're all said and done, we look at occupying all the spaces by mid-January of two thousand and nineteen. That's, that's schedule. So are there any questions at this point in time?
Where are the police going to be relocated while you're inside doing everything?
Well, when we do the existing police station, they'll be working inside the existing. Then what we're going to do is move them from the existing building that they're in into the addition. So that vacates the existing first floor, and then our contractor goes and does the first floor.
So there'll be no trailers on the parking lot?
No.
None?
Not, not, right.
That's one of the greatest advantages, was there's going to be no disruption to their daytime operations.
So you're saying a, well over a year and a half, right?
Well, you're talking about opening bids in October. We figure the construction of the addition will probably be completed in August of two thousand and eighteen, and that the completion of the existing station would be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. And they'll be continually working right through the entire calendar year. There won't be any shutdown periods.
And we did discuss the cost estimates in the committee and reviewed all the, the possible cuts, and I think everyone, it was consensus of everyone that the price is what it is, the building is where we want it to be, and, you know, we do believe that we could find the additional funding if it actually comes in at that higher estimate.
I agree with that, because I don't foresee having vinyl siding. Needs to be brick. So just to save a hundred thousand dollars, it's not really worth it.
That's exactly how we looked at it. In addition to that, we looked at lowering the grade of garage doors, lowering the grade of lighting fixtures, which in the long run would cost us more.
Exactly.
So we felt it would be expedient to do it now.
Onward and upward.
Any other questions at this time?
I, I have a couple, right. Jerry, I asked you this week at the meeting that the State Department of Corrections has signed off on all this, and we're assured of that. Because I think there's some requirements about juvenile cells and the proximity to adult cells and, in addition to cell sizes and whatnot, but we're, we're good to go on all that.
Yes, we've been communicating with the, the Department of Corrections, like, during the whole design process. They've seen the plan more than once, I guess, during the course of developing the, the drawings. Final sign-off wouldn't really occur until the building is actually constructed, and they do a walkthrough of the final construction. But from a design point of view, they're okay with what's been proposed thus far.
Okay, and the, the construction on Ninety-Fifth Street, as far as the streets and the utilities that are going in, has that been completed? Is that, is that done between first and second?
The design's done. The issue is, I think we have two DOT grants that are for portions of it, and the question is, are we going to combine the two into one contract? And that decision has not yet been made. But that portion of Ninety-Fifth near the police station has been designed at this point in time.
Because it's got a dovetail with, when you guys start construction, right? You know, you don't want them to do that street, and then you come in and start building buildings.
Well, the thing is, we'd have, when they go ahead and do that street, we would put in the utilities, we'd probably go as far as, depending on the schedule, to make the road passable, probably put base down, but we wouldn't put the top down until the police station was done.
I'm going to, I'm going to bring up one more thing, and... I hope I'm not sorry I brought it up. Within the past twenty-four hours, we've had discussions of raising floor elevations by a foot. I noticed that you said two feet on your elevation. So if we go within the next six months and change it to three feet, what does that do to this project?
Basically, the issue will be your drive-through. You would have ramps that probably would exceed ten percent, which is usually what you want to use as a maximum for your driveway ramps. You might even have to go to fifteen percent from ten to fifteen percent. So you'd have very steep slopes going through the, the drive-through. Other than that, just be adding stairs, right, Jerry? Anything else?
Yeah, I...
Oh, and there's the, the second floor.
I would say you would still, if, if we propose no changes, you would still conform to FEMA requirements. You just would be, you would not be in compliance with your own ordinance if you added a foot, an additional foot of freeboard.
But that, so if you start a construction, if the contract is let at two feet, right?
Right.
And it, and we change to three sometime in the course of that, it doesn't affect the contract? They're still on for two feet?
That's correct. Yeah, it would have been constructed with the ordinance that was in effect at the time that building permits were issued.
And for that particular location, in your opinion, is two feet sufficient?
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, your existing first floor is at roughly a little over elevation, or a little under elevation eleven. At least from recent memory, I don't ever recall floodwaters coming into the first floor of the municipal building or police station.
No.
The, the thing is also that if, and if it was changed in a year from now, two years from now, or three years from now, you can always go with floodproofing of the access doors, because we don't have that many access doors, and they could be floodproofed as well.
Well, I, you know, I, I just wanted to have the discussion, because the last thing I want is that we go ahead and do this, and then six months later, somebody says, "Well, you knew you were going to three, how come you did this?" So...
I have a quick question. How feasible would it be to, if this were to take place? And incidentally, the, the discussion that Ray is referring to was at the planning board meeting yesterday. So it was an open, public meeting. It wasn't a discussion amongst council members separately. If we were to move to base flood elevation plus three, is it feasible? And I, I know you talked about the pitch of the, the entry to the Sally Port. Would that be feasible to keep perhaps the Sally Port, where it's really a parking area, at? So we, so we still maintain that gradual pitch into that, and then step up into the rest of the building so that we are...
Yeah, the, the downside would be is that you have to make a level change then between the vehicle areas and the occupied areas of the building.
Right.
Certainly feasible, but not ideal.
Not ideal.
If you were, if you were an officer with, you know, say you've got a three-hundred-pound detainee, and you're not only trying to maneuver him out of a car through a doorway, no processing area, but making a level change also.
Right.
That's a situation you'd hope to avoid.
What about the relationship during the first floor?
Food for thought.
Yeah, and it would be also possible to make a level change between existing portion of the building being reused and the building addition.
Yeah, now you'd be at a one foot, four inches.
Instead of four inches, right? You know, it's a, it means we have a longer ramp, and we'd have to figure out how to...
Spread that out further.
Yeah, we'd have to figure out how to plan for that. It's not a, i- if you were to try and retrofit the building later and elevate the building so the first floor was an additional foot higher, you couldn't do it. The only feasible option you would have would be to, to floodproof by adding floodgates at exterior doors.
Well, the consensus, I, from what I'm hearing, is we're okay at that location with two feet.
Yes.
So I, I just didn't, you know, I didn't want to go forward with that piece of information in the background and not have a discussion about it, so everybody knows.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any last-minute questions, discussion concerning the police building in general? No. Yes, we have heard it so often. I concur. So that being said, we can move on to recreation and tourism? Are we ready?
Miranda, Miranda just completed...
Come on in.
...one of the busiest weekends of the year, single-handedly, and only with accolades. I've only heard wonderful things about the variety of vendors. I've heard all positive input. Congratulations once again.
Thank you, I was wondering what all the feedback was that everyone heard on the street, so, that's great.
All good.
Good.
Yep.
Yay. So my timeline, I'm going to work backwards just to let you know the few things that are wrapping up. Tonight's concert will start with, so the show must go on. The rain will hopefully subside, it jumps down to twenty percent. So we are moving forward with the Dainte Anthony DuWatt concert tonight, so I hope you all can make it. Town is packed, so I have a feeling this concert will be well-attended. So the show is on tonight, seven P.M. I am down to my skeleton staff. We finished up our end-of-the-season awards picnic on Friday, which means our basketball league, our youth arts and crafts, and our youth sports clinics have ended. We still have quite a few programs still happening. We still have surf camp, boot camp, sandbar, private tennis lessons, a soccer camp happening, flag football leagues. We still have quite a few programs being offered, but for a large chunk of it, it is, the season has ended. So all of my staff goes back for preseason to their respective colleges or high schools. So I'm just staffing the Ninety-Sixth Street and Eighty-Second Street buildings at this point. So for numbers for all of the programs, for those respective programs I just listed, I will present to you at the September meeting, once we're ready. So we'll chat about it in the BRT meeting we have in August, and then I'll be able to have a full report for you in September. So any questions about any of the summer programs?
I wanted to ask you something about Chelsea Park, and I don't know how, I'm going to ask. I was down there, and there was an adult woman with her husband and three children that came on bicycles and got in the spinner, the woman, and the husband's...
The spinner, like the child's spinner?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my.
And then the boys were running around crazy, and we had little ones, one, two, and three. So they're in the little thing. And the one with the tube, the boys were hiding in there. So then I just approached the father, and I said, "Excuse me, you know, this is for the really little kids." And he said, "Well, the sign says twelve-year-olds." And I said, "Well, are they twelve-year-olds?" And he said, "They're close enough," meaning they were over it. So I don't know how we can address that. I mean, it's really sad for the little ones, that...
It's hard not having a building there to be able to monitor.
I guess you can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
I mean, not monitor, but I don't know if signage is better. Why, they shouldn't even be down there.
Well, saw the sign, and still abused it.
Yeah, he did abuse it. Yeah, they were having a grand old time spinning around. And the girl took over the swings, and she was on the swings like a hour. Then the girl took over the swings, and she was on the swings like a hour.
I'm just glad they didn't get stuck.
I think it's a bigger concern that parents are on these rides.
Yeah.
That would, that would be a bigger concern to me, that parents are on rides that are meant for kids.
Yeah.
That would be...
In that cup, that spinner cup.
Yeah, that goes fast. And the rain kind of deterred our summer, our first annual summer, Junior Summer Slam Tennis Tournament on Saturday. So we postponed it. So glad we postponed it, because it was a beautiful day on Sunday. We had twenty kids participate, which I was thrilled with. So it was boys and girls, all under fourteen years of age. Some of the children had had more experience, and they were USTA avid players. But then some, it was their first USTA tournament. So it was pretty neat to see the dynamics that came to this type of a tournament. We ended up doing a round-robin tournament where each of the kids would see a different opponent play a shorter, shorter match in a different style. It's just really, really incredible to see these kids kind of blossom. One of the little girls, it was her first tournament. She was ten years old. And she didn't win one single game. But at the very end, she was like the last woman standing on the court, and all of the parents and the players just cheered for her. Because she just gave such a valiant effort. So it was a great, you know, just moment for the program and for tennis and for those kids to have that experience now. And I got a lot of compliments from parents, like, just thanking us for turning it around and getting, you know, the youth programming back in here for that particular sport. So was really thrilled to hear that. So that was a success, in my opinion. And on to Sheck Fest, so the Stone Harbor Arts and Crafts Festival for the fifty-fifth year. Have some handouts. So this is the breakdown. I've been trying to track everything since 2015. I started, took over in 2014, was my first year, following through to the event. And it was more or less just getting my feet wet that first year. And then trying to make slow changes to build, build this show's reputation back to where, you know, it used to be in the good old days, they keep telling me. So we've had some really tried-and-true exhibitors that have stayed with the, with the event. And it's been really fantastic to see the growth of it. So even though you see these numbers, what I'm taking away from this is that it's headed in a positive direction. We spent a good chunk of money into the advertising of it all. And it's just more or less, it's the advertising that we do for the exposure, but then it's all through the word of mouth with these returning exhibitors that, after going through all of the sites and chatting with everyone, they just see the level of the show escalating to where it used to be. And that was my goal from the beginning, to be an event that Stone Harbor is proud of and proud to host while still keeping, you know, the expenses down. But you'll see, you know, the professional, the professional expenses decreased. The rentals increased a little bit, and that is due to just renting larger-sized tents to be able to accommodate the exhibitors that wanted the sites underneath of the tents. The advertising, we did put a digital media campaign together. So instead of putting so much effort into radio advertising and print advertising, we did more of the digital media campaign, and we launched that in May, and that proved fruitful. There was a lot of play that we got on Facebook and through those dark ads that we ran. So I'll be able to have a full report from you. I'm just waiting to hear back from the ClearBridge Media, who we hired, on a full report of, you know, clicks and all that good stuff, and how, how much exposure we really got from that. And then just the miscellaneous costs. And I still owe you the, the staff wages, but you can see that the forecasted revenues are down at the bottom. So for exhibitors-wise, it's hard to, we're kind of in that two-hundred, two-hundred-person range. We had two-thirty in 2015, one-hundred-and-ninety-six in 2016. And by the end of it, we had two-hundred-and-four physically onsite in 2017. So we did have a couple no-shows. You always get those family emergencies at the very end. But right now, we're looking at the total revenues of eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And then the expenses, we're looking at the forty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy, sixty-eight number. So this is the breakdown. But like I said, I think it's headed in a positive direction. And the feedback has been great that I've gotten from the exhibitors and the town and all the visitors. So if anybody else has anything that they would like to add, so I can make notes for improvements next year. I appreciate you guys coming around and really giving me some feedback on improvements and...
It was perfect weather.
And it, it was a doable, the floor plan, the way it was done this year,
which I think you might have moved a couple things around. It was open. The, the air was blowing through it. You, the crowds, you didn't have to step around people. I thought that this was, you, I think you really nailed the, the whole layout.
Good.
And I, I personally saw a lot of different vendors. And I think that, I think it's heading in the right direction. Really.
And what, I was very impressed.
But it just, maybe, I don't know who can answer this question, but the power for security lights?
Yeah, I saw that.
Three thousand dollars? What is that?
Which one is it on?
It's under rentals.
Under rentals.
And it's new just this year. What was that?
For Patrache, I rented, there were six globes in each of the four tents, so there's four big tents. And last year, I tried to do solar power lights. It just didn't pump enough power. So at nighttime, when the police are doing their walkthroughs, they need to be able to see inside the tents. So naturally, you want to have the lights on during the show, just so people can see their merchandise. But then they stay on all night long for security. So that was in addition, just because we, we don't have enough power in, on that rec field to be able to power those large tents.
Is that figure an estimate?
No, that was, that was it.
Now, did that come in for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, was that...
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, because they load in on Friday. So Friday afternoon, those lights were turned on, and PD took over.
Even though you're doing a great job, you really are. And the, the actual arts and craft, I understand, was well-attended. We're still losing a lot of money each year. It's still declining. How many more years are we gonna kind of keep at this?
And that's something we'll have to discuss.
Because each year, you see a decrease in, in revenue. And salaries aren't included in this yet, or...
Right.
Print benefits aren't included. None of that's included. So...
Well, the revenue has been going up. The revenue went up over last year. Oh, that's the profit. I'm looking at the revenue.
Oh, the total revenue.
The revenue is great. It's just your profit.
The revenue is going up.
Your expenses.
And, and...
Well, you have to look at the bottom.
Once you expense out.
Right.
Once you expense out.
But she had an expense that she hasn't had before, three thousand dollars.
And also in the advertising. There's a big increase in advertising.
The advertising and the rentals were the two that, where we increased.
Yeah.
And the advertising was to get the crowds there. And from all of the exhibitors that have been there for twenty-plus years, they say this is the biggest crowd they remember coming through. So I have to attribute that, some of that to our advertising.
And weather.
Weather was perfect.
The weather was absolutely perfect. The breeze was wonderful.
But they're not buying. Apparently, they're not buying, right?
Well, we wouldn't know what their profits were.
Right.
How, did they tell you? Were the people buying? How were the vendors, were they pleased?
Were thrilled.
Well, see, that's a good point.
That may bring even more.
Because if you add the lights back into your net profit, you're almost the same as last year. So there just has to be a way to make up for the additional expenses.
One of the things that you carefully do is discreetly screen the applicants so that you don't overlap with duplication. Would we be wise to perhaps attract another twenty or twenty-five vendors? And then we would have, we wouldn't have the variety. We would have duplication. Would that result in a higher profit, or would it all work out evenly in the end?
If we do accept duplicates?
If we took another twenty-five, for example?
Duplicates.
Duplicates.
I would not, that would not fare well.
No. I, I know that. One of the things that I heard was how the variety was, it was a different eye candy at each...
There were two, there were two that were very similar, and all weekend, they were, they were not...
So that would know.
Yeah. So I just, I think the morale of the entire event, you want to have that, "I have a unique product. I have something to sell. I'm thrilled. There's, you know, two-hundred exhibitors with me, but I have something unique." So just like farmer's market, you don't want to have that same product in that competition.
You're right.
But I think we will, from the chats that I had with the high-end, fine artists, that they know a lot more will apply next year, because the word's gonna start to spread. They already sent me some of the forum posts that they did on our behalf, saying that the show is coming back. So I think we'll get a lot more high-end applications next year.
That may do the trick.
Mm-hmm. When's the last time we raised the site fees?
That was my second year, so 2015.
The radio ad that you have listed for a thousand dollars, was that covered the entire, any radio ads you do for anything else, or was it just this?
No, so since we decided not to sign the contract with Coastal Broadcasting to advertise the entire year this year and put that money into the digital media, I only just did two weeks of radio. So those other previous years, it's hard to quantify, because it was kind of lumped into the other events that we had all summer long. So we ran radio ads from May till Labor Day. But this was solely just for this event.
Do you feel it helps a radio?
Actually, I had a few people, I was impressed. I did have a few people that said, "Oh, I wouldn't have known. I heard it on the radio on our way in." So that gave me justification that at least that thousand dollars was hopefully well-spent.
Perhaps it's time for us to consider a small increase for the vendors in their, their rent, their rental fee.
Right.
So perhaps it's something we could add to the BRT agenda for this month.
Right.
And just discuss it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Anything else?
Anything else from you? Miranda and I are hosting the Canadian...
The French-Canadian Travel Show.
Friday morning.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. I guess we're walking around town. We're going to the beach. We're doing stuff. And then they're gonna play pickleball. It should be interesting.
That was postponed from last week because of the rain. So bring them to the green fair.
But it's Friday. Is it Green Fair Friday?
It's Friday.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, this is eight-thirty Friday morning.
Okay, no, it's Saturday.
Yes. So that should be a fun morning for us, Miranda.
Yes.
And I think the chamber is involved later in the day, and someone else is. I can't remember. Maybe it's just the chamber. The bow, the chamber.
I think the reeds.
The reeds is involved? Okay. Oh, and the wetlands, too. So they're here all day pretty, when are they with you, Lenore? Afternoon? They gotta be.
Probably between you and me.
Then, oh, okay. So it's gotta be afternoon with them. So they'll be around all day.
Yeah. Yeah. All good things. Thank you.
Natural Resources.
I'm just gonna say quickly, we did have a natural resource meeting on July sixth. In attendance was Ray Parsick, Jill Galger, Grant Russ, Craig Reeves, and Lenore Tedesco. And because there are more items on the agenda here to talk about for natural resources, it was a good meeting. We just sort of understand everything that we're doing is moving in the right direction. And we do have another meeting scheduled that will start to talk about budgeting on September seventh at eight-thirty. So I'll turn this over to our administrator. Oh, well, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to Ray Roberts to give us an update on where he's at with the mitigation plan.
First up.
Hi, thank you very much. We're discussing here the, the Stormwater Master Plan. And the purpose of the Stormwater Master Plan is to come up with a phased program aimed at resolving and mitigating the flooding problems throughout the borough. There are a few things that are causing the flooding that we have. One, we have tidal flooding. Tidal flooding, anything that breaches the bulkheads obviously causes us some flooding issues. The second is that most of our drainage on the bay side of the borough goes into the borough through tide control valves. Several of those have no control on them, so that any high tide that comes in above the top of that pipe will then back up through that pipe into the borough streets and flood the intersections. So you'll see flooding of the intersection sometimes when you don't even have a, a large breach of your bulkheads. So you have those two issues. And then you also have, when you have rainstorms coming, there's two things. One, you, you don't have enough drainage pipes in the streets to pick up the flow. Two, you don't have enough drop inlets to have the capacity to take the surface flow and get it into the pipe. And you need to have a, a good system in order to get the water off the surface and underground. And we don't have that here in the borough at this time. Now, the proposed, the major issues that we have to address here, and the recommendations are the, your bulkhead ordinance, which I know you're working on at the present time. The key is that bulkhead ordinance needs to be enforced. So that's the first thing that you have to do. For, from a tide point of view, establish your elevation of your bulkheads, and then enforce your ordinance so that you have that barrier consistent along the entire bayfront. Also, what we're looking here is to avoid the backing up through your existing storm system that we are recommending abandoning all your outfalls into the bay. That means any rainfall will be contained in the borough, but will be then picked up and piped to pump stations. We're looking at seven to eight pump stations throughout the borough and the various drainage areas. These pump stations will take care of everyday rainfalls, will take care of the major rainfalls that you have, right? And it will then also quickly evacuate any floodwaters that have breached your bulkhead. That's the purpose of the pump stations. The pump stations aren't to keep up pumping with the amount of bay water coming into the borough. Those pump stations would be so enormous, and you'd just be pumping the sea against the sea. So the purpose, again, of those pump stations are to evacuate the water that might be left from any breaching of the bulkheads and to carry any, any storm flows during, any rainstorm during the year. So all our surface water will be running to these pump stations and then pumped out. We also have a couple, Third Avenue, which we all know is the county road. We've been talking to the county engineer's office, and they're well-aware of what we're planning. The pump stations that we're planning will also be picking up water coming from Third Avenue. The county system that they're putting in Third Avenue will also pick up borough storm drainage, which we plan on having from the streets that go from this ocean to the bay, where we don't have any storm drainage now. So this will be a cooperative effort between both, both the borough and the county to make sure that both their plan and our plans are coordinated correctly.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
When you say pump station, just so we have it all in our mind, you're not talking big pump stations as we're presently using now for our wells and our, our evacuation, our lift stations. You're talking something much smaller.
The, the pump stations, at this point in time, the first one that is being under design right now as part of your flood hazard mitigation grant is the existing pump station, the existing sanitary pump station on Third, on Third? On Ninety-third? That will be abandoned as a sanitary pump station and converted to a storm pump station. The new sanitary pump station will be behind that. So that's gonna be the station. And that station, you know, your stations will have generators that have to be above the flood elevation. But the pump station itself will be at grade, the top will be at grade. They'll be in the ground with wet wells, and the pumps will be submersible pumps inside the wet well. We have looked through, as we're planning the location of the pump stations, we're looking at putting them in town-owned property. We are keeping them from any street ends so that we don't have any visual conflict with, with the bayfronts. So we're looking at that. We will, in our report, have a map showing the locations of the city-owned parcels and which ones that we have picked for the location of the pump stations. And then we will be reviewing that with the council before we do any finalization of the report. So we're accumulating all that data now that we can then present at a later date. We'll have maps, et cetera. It'll make it a lot easier to understand what we're doing.
Ray, I have, I have a question for you, because this is really hard to comprehend. At the street ends, when you say you're gonna put a pump station, you mean we're gonna have houses here, and the end of the street is a pump station?
No.
No, he said they're not going to.
We're not doing it.
So it's gonna be... So it's gonna be, it's, everything's gonna be under?
For instance, you, you know, you, you have to look at, uh, over on Eightieth Street, where we have a lot of, uh, property that's being used with, uh, public works. You know, one of the stations would be in that area, where it's away from residential. We're gonna try to keep them in areas that are away from residential, uh, view, uh, vis- visual. The visual effect of these, we're looking to minimize by keeping them in locations that are, um, more appropriate for what we plan on doing.
Do we have seven or eight properties that?
Oh, yes.
Joan, I think your, is your question that, is there going to be a building above ground for this? That's your question, right?
This, the pump station itself, no, the wet well, no. But you will have a generator, and you will have electrical equipment that will be above. And those are the things that would be visible. But we don't, we will not be putting any at the street ends themselves. Also, we have, there's still, there's two remaining beach outfalls, one hundred-eleventh and one hundred-fourteenth street. This program will also show how we will be able to eliminate those. They're both through ocean outfalls, which are subject to water flowing back in them. And they will be, um, we will connect those street ends to the overall master plan, and then we'll be able to eliminate those two outfalls as well. And again, this will be, you know, we're anticipating, and, uh, to show it to you in our first draft, there's a ten-year plan with, which will have cost estimates with it as well. Also, we will be showing what areas are most prone to flooding, and those would be the ones that you would want to, uh, start with as far as doing the improvements. And it wouldn't, the improvements would be a combination of all these in each of those areas. In other words, the pump sta, the, uh, bulkheads need to be enforced. The pump station for that particular drainage area would be in place. The storm drainage system leading to that pump station will be in place. And the outfalls that are presently there will be abandoned. So they have to work together. No, no one thing here is gonna solve your problem. All, the, all of these elements have to be blended together as we move forward.
Ray, um, a resident had asked me a question, which was actually a very good one. Um, in terms of the plan, I know that we've already been in coordination with the county, but what about on Eightieth Street with Avalon? Um, with like the bulkhead and, and the drainage issues?
No, we, we have not been involved in Avalon. The only discussion that we've had, uh, in our office with Avalon is depending on what the Borough of Stone Harbor picks as their bulkhead elevation, right? Would need to be coordinated with Avalon, because otherwise, if we're higher than them, the water can come around that way. About three blocks down, so probably about Seventy-sixth, Seventy-fifth Street is a high point draining towards Stone Harbor, and the rest draining towards Avalon. So any of the spillover from that high point will be included in the pump station that we're designing on Eightieth Street.
Do you have a recommended bulkhead height?
No, sir. I know that you're, you're dealing with that right now. I mean, there's plenty of...
I thought you were dealing with that, too.
Well, I think, I think we're kind of dealing with that together, but there's several elements that, you know, have to be looked at here. And, you know, what, um, what you're gonna give for sea rise elevation? That you're gonna want to build into, into your FEMA flood elevations? We know that, uh, some of the existing data that's out there as far as flood elevation heights, sea rise has, you know, creeped up while that number has stayed the same. So all those issues need to be looked at. Uh, we do have, uh, tide gauge information from the tide gauge at the base of the bridge, uh, coming in on the bay shore, so, bayside. So we have good readings there. I had included those in the first draft, which are, uh, will be updated as we move fur- further along through the process. And, um, we looked at the tide gauge readings from March of two thousand to March of two thousand and sixteen. And we show the nineteen-eighty-eight datum, and how many, uh, average occurrences per year the tide has exceeded that number. And if you have that with you, it's probably about, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. It's like the fifth or sixth page. It's under, it's, the heading of the page says existing. And you could see if, uh, if you set an elevation of, um, three, which nineteen-eighty-eight, sixty-seven times a year, that gets exceeded. And if you work your way down through here, you'll see that at elevation six-point-eight, it hasn't exceeded it during that period of time. So it kind of gives you a feel for where you may want to be. You know, looking at this, at this point in time, uh, from a nineteen-eighty-eight, just looking at the tide gauge, you're looking at probably six feet.
Can I interrupt you just for one second, Ray? Lenore?
The tide gauge fails at six-point-eight feet, so there's nothing above six-point-eight, because you can't afford all of that. Sandy, just confirm that six-point-nine feet is the distance. If that goes to zero, that's one of these.
Okay.
But again, if you look at the gauges like at six, you know, it's point-two times per year. And I assume it reads at six?
It reads at six. Jonas' was six-point. Jonas and Sandy's was about six-point.
So, so you're in that, you know, you're in that area, plus what are you gonna use for sea rise? And that's a, you know, a discussion that really needs to be held. You know, we are available to work with you. I know we have in the past, as you've tried to work your way through this. But I would recommend that there be a specific, um, whether it's a, a group or whatever, that is gonna sit down and crank it out as their top priority. Otherwise, it's just gonna continue to...
Well, thi- this is, this is your first draft, correct?
Yes.
So, when, when do you anticipate having a final done? With cost estimates and...
Probably in two months.
Two months. You know, I, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but this, uh, I was glad to read this, because this is the first document I've seen that addresses all the things we've been talking about for the past five months. It's all in here, you know, the, the valves, the bulkhead height, the drainage issues, the rain flooding, the tide flooding, it's, it's all in here, positive closing valves on the bulkhead. So these are all things, I think, I think you grasp what the problem is. Now, how do we fix it? So, and that's what we're gonna look in two months at the final.
Right.
The, is it, it's, uh, flood zone C, I think, that, is that where the Ninety-third Street pump station is? That's being worked on now, designed, right? It's going to, to address the issues in, in the C suction.
Yes, that's exactly right, in drainage area C.
So, so that's like the first phase?
Right.
What, are we looking at seven phases here, or are we looking, are we gonna be doing work?
Once, what, once we put the dollars together, then you'll be looking at it over, do you want to do this in five years? You want to do it in seven? You want to do it in ten? We know as you work your way from Eightieth down to Hundred-and-twenty-second, your borough's doing this. So the flooding down in those areas are not as extensive as...
Correct.
...are in C and D. And the thing is, the reason we started with C was your flood hazard, uh, grant program is based on the number of sites that have repeti- repetitive damage to it, and that is C. D, next to it, you know, around Eightieth Street, that drainage area is pretty much the same, um, height level, but it hasn't had this repeated, repetitive losses that this particular funding source needs as a criteria to fund you. So that's why we're starting there.
Do you anticipate seven additional pumps, or is that one of the seven, so to speak? That's one of the seven.
So the, the six, um, in, in two months in your final report, I'm assuming that you're gonna work, continue to work with the county on?
Yes.
And then, you know, we'll have some idea of what they plan to kick in or help with, or be responsible for?
Right, the county at this point in time, they're actually, uh, we're working with them to get them our survey information, which was just completed, um, for the sections of Third Avenue that we've done, because they're looking right now to concentrate their efforts on doing from Eightieth to Ninety-third Street to get the floodwaters down to our new pump station. Uh, so they're willing to do that. I asked the, uh, county engineer about the funding of that, and he said, we'll have to see, you know, what we have to do here. Basically, they're gonna have to put a whole line down Third Avenue, and then to be breaking at certain points going into the individual pump stations.
So Ray, after you finish your report in two months, you'll have a schematic of the six or seven or eight, where they're going to be placed?
Yes, we'll have a map that shows the location that we're proposing. Uh, it will show all the pipe work that we're proposing. Um, and, uh, uh, you know, we'll have costs for all those.
And it'll show the generator and electric equipment to size, and how are you going to camouflage that?
Well, that'd be, that, that's more of a, a design issue. I think what we're having here is to look at, uh, the size of the parcel, to know what size we have there, and what we can do to hide it with vegetation from, from the general public's view. You know, um, there are some areas that we'll probably not be able to hide it. But we know we're not gonna have anything at the street ends. That's definite.
If, if we are more proactive, I noticed in reading this, and, and maybe it sounds too simplistic, but the Bay Marine Park boat ramp seems to be a very definite cause of flooding in the Eightieth Street area. So if, with the work the county is gonna do, if we were to do these things at the marina, would that mitigate substantially a lot of the flooding in that area?
Uh, yes, you know, we, we know that that area is like a sluice gate. The water just comes right up there. Uh, we're talking, uh, to Ms. Gouger, that we're looking to put a proposal together to do that, to put a flood wall there across that boat ramp, a removable flood wall, do that prior to this master plan. Because of its, it's such a gap there, that it needs to be addressed soon, sooner than later.
It seemed simple, but not really simple, just reading it.
One of the other outstanding things is the bulkhead height, and we do have to go in and survey all the properties. And I did talk to Ray in reference to that. Do you want to explain the two options that we have?
It's really essential to know what you have out there before you decide what you want to do. Because there are the issues of, you know, what are you gonna use for enforcement tools, et cetera, and how extensive is that going to be? So we have, um, I had given verbally a proposal to Jill, and she asked me if I would put it in writing, which we will do. To do a survey of the top of all the bulkheads, there's thirty-three thousand feet of bulkheads on the bayside. To do a survey along that to determine what we do have, what we're gonna be working with, right? That'd be a twenty-five thousand dollars. If our surveyors can walk along the bulkheads and just take their shots as they go, right? If they're not allowed on private property, it would have to be done from the bayside, which means additional crew members, a boat, and extra time. That would cost you fifty-five thousand. Now, in the past, in municipalities we've done this for, and the municipality has put, uh, done a lot of public outreach through newspapers, through their websites, et cetera, advising the residents that this is gonna take place. And it turned out that was, the, the surveyors went out there, did, they were stopped by, I think in, um, Brigington, they were stopped by two property owners who asked what they were doing there, and they said, we're taking the shots. They go, that's fine, but the rest of the property owners had known it, no one had a concern about it. To, to, to go through and get an actual easement or right to enter the property on that many properties will probably take years to do, so...
And you can't mandate it under public safety, or?
I believe that...
Maybe there's something we can mandate?
So those are the two ranges you're talking about. You're talking about either twenty-five thousand or fifty-five thousand.
Interesting, okay.
Our, our surveys would prefer walking the top of the bulkhead.
So at this point, I think the recommendation, my recommendation would be, um, this is, this is our first draft, the first thing we're seeing. It's brought up a lot of other questions internally and in, like, our natural resource committee. So I'd like to bring that back to natural resources, um, to bring Ray in and really go over a little more detail of it, and just make sure, number one, that there's, they're not missing something that we think's important in there, and we get it clarified and move forward.
And moving forward, in order to get all of the, um, bulkheads where we want it, this was, I think you might have mentioned it before, um, an incentive that possibly we could bond this and then just do an assessment to the individual homeowners and allow them to pay us, almost like a loan, to repay it? Is that a possibility?
Yes, you can do a special assessment.
It might make it easier for everyone to do it.
Would there be a possibility, Jill, that during that process, we would allow people who just couldn't afford to do it to pay us when they sell their home? That we would actually have a lien against their home?
That's more speculative than the time payment.
Yeah, yeah. The other one is statutorily settled, you can do it that way.
Amortize it over a period of time.
I mean, you can go as high as ten years on a special assessment. So you can make it fairly reasonable for them. So next up is you're going, is back to natural resources and start to get more specific on this plan? Yes.
One thing I just want to note for everyone, so that we're all on the same page. Bulkheads are to protect property, right? They're not waterproof. You'll see bulkheads that are put in the ground, and on high tides, you'll see water leaking through them, right? In your draft of your bulkhead ordinance, you have a condition there that we are gonna require people who are doing the bulkheads, raising them to the height they have to, to have the, uh, exposed part of the bulkhead and two feet under grade as waterproofed. As you saw, you would have read it in the report here, all right? So now it acts as a dam and not just to protect the property. So, uh, so the, the replacement isn't kind, in kind for in kind. It's additional, uh, work that would have to be done on these bulkheads to make them watertight.
Well, I think we're, I think we're all in agreement on the, the specifications that were provided. It's that infamous what height?
Right.
And that's the missing blank we're looking for.
And back to that, and that's what I wanted to comment on. I brought this up before, but I figure since Ray's here in front of us, it bears mentioning again. It seems fairly logical to me that, um, and Ray brought this up earlier, we're, we're talking about going to base flood plus perhaps three at some point down the road. It was discussed yesterday at the planning board meeting, and taken into serious consideration that with sea level rises, and we're headed that way, sooner probably rather than later. With that in mind, you have homeowners that are building to either base flood nine plus two or three in the future. The idea of a bayfront owner is access to that bay. It seems very logical to me that the height of that bulkhead should be obviously no higher than your first floor of the interior of that house, and should be, uh, sw- in, almost in line with the first floor so that you can transition to your bayfront. That's the whole idea of living on the bay, is getting to your dockage, getting to your water access seamlessly as possible. So, in my mind, it's, it's actually fairly straightforward. I mean, there's obviously a host of other considerations, but that bulkhead height, in my mind, if we're building to, uh, nine plus three, let's say, down the road in, in the near future, that bulkhead should perhaps be maybe a foot or no more than two feet below that. Uh, we have the data from Lenore as to, uh, what, where sea level rise is going. In the next fifty to a hundred years, it's, it's pretty serious. So, um, in my mind, if, it obviously can't go higher, then we're not gonna come out of a house and go up to your bulkhead. Uh, I think it needs to be close or at where your first living height is.
So much of it's gonna depend on the implementation of it, though. How, how are we gonna phase this in? Because you have a lot of properties...
Oh, I, I don't...
That are down at ground level, and we can't just come in and say, well, we're gonna be four feet above base, because then they're gonna be sitting on their sofa looking at their bulkheads. So we have to consider that, too.
There's always a trigger mechanism when you do the forty percent elevation, or there's a trigger mechanism. Obviously, they don't have to do it unless...
Yes.
We have health, where, welfare, safety powers to come in, because it's so derelict that we can do that for them. So I think...
But there's still gonna be some, we're gonna run into some, where you've got a low bulkhead...
Absolutely.
And a low house, and they're flooding the neighborhood, and we can't have a trigger mechanism. We're gonna have to say, by such and such a date, you've got to be up to this height.
Yeah. So, am I misunderstanding this? I thought previously we said it was all going to be grandfathered.
No, we never said-
It's not going to solve the problem.
We didn't, we really did not get specific about, like, that specific, but no, we keep saying grandfathering is just going to continue to allow a breach.
Right.
It's just the breach is going to continue to exist. We just have to figure out a way to do it to make it financial.
Ray said a lot of the homes are one floor and they're flooding. There are a lot of homes, one floor, not flooding. So, now you're imposing upon those people to raise their bulkhead when it's unnecessarily.
Because see, that's another, that's another part of it. If, if, if we get the elevations of all the bulkheads on the island, we'll know where the problem ones are.
Right.
And they're the ones we're going to work on first. Yeah, if your, if your property's so high that you're not flooding anything, and for all practicality, it's, it's, it's not an issue, we can, we can work on that in the future sometimes, when it, when it becomes an issue. But it, it's really going to be like a phased kind of-
I think first, too, we need to see how many properties we're dealing with, too. We really need to get definitive, a definitive number.
Isn't it 400 bayfronts in Stone Harbor?
Yes.
Is that correct?
According to our dredger-
Roughly, roughly.
Because our, our, once we do the survey, it will be by parcel, so we'll be able to know. And as, you probably know, there are people that may have a, a bulkhead at seven and a half, but to get to their dock, they have a break in it that goes down to four feet. We'll be picking up those, too, to see, you know, that those would have to be addressed as well.
So, you're telling me that if somebody just put in a bulkhead last year, you're going to enforce that? No, okay, that's what I want to know.
I thought that's what you're, I think you, that's what you meant by grandfather.
Yes.
Really, that they wouldn't have to immediately redo their bulkhead.
Right.
I think that's, that's-
That's what I mean.
-my standpoint, is that if somebody just put one in, and I think that Joan used the term grandfathered, meaning they wouldn't have to as soon as we enact this ordinance. We would have every bay, every, every bayfront owner that's under the new level coming and ripping their bulkhead out. No, I think it's a phased, when somebody redoes their bulkhead-
That's right.
-or there's the trigger in our ordinance that says, hey, you're doing more than 40% of your assessed value to a renovation of your home. Some trigger mechanism wherein, or there's a sale of the property.
Right.
Whatever we want to decide is the appropriate trigger.
Or it's torn down, something to that effect.
Right, whatever the appropriate trigger point is, then that-
Again, the thing here is that if you, you're talking about grandfathering, if somebody went in and put a new bulkhead in and made the elevation of your current bulkhead requirement, I think that's what you have to look at. Prior to that, I would say you don't grandfather anybody, don't even think about it.
Okay, back to natural resources.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ray. How's our time, 4:33, not too bad. Joe, flood damage prevention ordinance.
Okay, we kind of touched on it a little bit here. That is on for introduction at our next meeting. We did take it as, as a courtesy review to the planning board last night. We did have a very healthy, lengthy conversation about it. And the main thing that we talked about was the, whether it would stay at the two foot where we're at now or go to the three. When I presented it to you at our last workshop, it had three in here, but I didn't highlight that. So, I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. The consensus from the planning board, the recommendation was to keep it at the two for now, even though there, it appears to be support to go to the three. We just felt it better to look at what effect that's going to have moving forward, if there's any design standards that they would want to recommend, because that would enact a possible zoning change. So, since there is no urgency on going from the two to the three, we're recommending introducing it, staying at, at that two foot, but we are under time constraints with the, with the state that we have to adopt the ordinance. So, our recommendation is to introduce it with a change of the two foot at their council meeting.
Okay. Questions on that, anybody? Report on our meeting today, please.
Okay. We met along with, the mayor and I, along with representatives from Avalon with Lobiondo and his staff to discuss the issue that we have with the CBR-
CRBA.
Thank you.
CBRA.
Yes. Where we cannot use federal funding to have a beach replenishment out of Hereford's inlet. He was very receptive to the information that was presented to him by the attorney hired by Avalon. He will be taking it back. They're, they are taking the approach of a multi-state issue. There are communities in North Carolina and South Carolina that are affected the same as we are. They've had preliminary discussions with them. They seem, the representatives from those states seem receptive to working with legis- you know, to have legislation amended that could fix this issue for us, so. And that's where, where it is at this point. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
I thought that Stu Farrell was very good-
Yes.
Having the information that he was giving as far as the sand coming out of Hereford inlet and eventually just going right back.
Yep, right.
And then out it goes, and then right back. And he was very good in, in explaining the lack of impact on the environment.
Right.
Using that as the borough area.
Yeah, and the fact we brought up, it was brought up that, that they were saying it was because it was a negative impact. However, if we chose to pay for it ourselves, we could take all the sand out that we wanted. So, where is the true environmental impact? If you can still take it, it's just, you're just not taking somebody's money for it, so.
So, it's hopeful that, that will open up as a borough area for us in the future using federal funds.
Right.
Josie, you have anything else?
I'm overwhelmed.
Do you want to touch on the ordinance change for the signs at this point, or?
That's fine, for political signs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, we had a question relative to political signage on the beach in the form of flags. Our ordinance presently provides that political signs are precluded on public property. There was a case that the Supreme Court of the United States decided called Reed v. Gilbert. It indicates that it is inappropriate, and it's a relatively recent case, inappropriate to discriminate signage on the basis of content. Our ordinance is violative of that, so today we're adopting an amendment to that ordinance eliminating the section, bringing it in compliance with Reed v. Gilbert.
And that's the only change we're going to be doing to the ordinance, is removing the political signs part? As far as flags, temporary banners, so on and so forth, we're not touching that.
On private property, correct?
This is on public property.
On just public property.
So, I don't, I don't, I guess what I-
On private property.
On private property.
That's what I thought, private property.
Right.
More private property, as far as the signage, we're removing the restriction on private property.
Removing the restriction relative to political signs, period.
Which we've done for, okay.
Political signs is in a section, it doesn't specify whether you're private. Reed v. Gilbert indicates that the ordinance may not impermissively address a sign by content. You can address it by size, you can address it by location, you can address it by public safety issues, but not by content. So, we're removing that section.
From both public and private property?
Yes.
So-
Ever.
Okay, so-
What?
Doesn't that allow anyone who wants to come into town and stick a sign in front of Borough Hall that they feel is a, a political sign? They can put it there, and we have no recourse?
No, because there are public safety issues and other issues with which you can preclude the planting of signage, but not specifically because it's a political sign.
Even like a little, a little portable, like a campaign sign, a sign like that? How are you going to say that's a public safety issue?
Depending on where it is on public property.
You just say no signs, right?
Signs on your property, you can't do it by virtue of what the content is.
Oh, boy, I'm really-
Didn't you just say you could regulate it by virtue of content, and then the second-
No, what I said is that Reed versus Gilbert precludes you from regulating by virtue of content. It allows you to regulate by virtue of size, any number of factors, or even outright prohibit in certain areas all signs, but not specific signs by virtue of content.
So, we could prohibit all signs on borough property?
On the beach.
You could, you could prohibit all signs on the beach.
Does, does this, does this ordinance that contains the political sign section, does the rest of the ordinance say that we? What enforcement do we have here now? Somebody comes in and puts a sign on Borough Hall that says, I don't know, some right-
We love Ray.
How could it say something obscene?
Yeah, you're not giving up your right to enforce against signs in general. What you can't do is specify as to political signs.
Just political.
You can't-
Not religious, not-
Yeah, and, and what I would do is-
Obscene.
Some of, some of you have read this opinion, I will circulate it, Reed versus Gilbert, and you should read it, because it clearly explains how they come to their analysis.
Well, just to play the devil's advocate, though, like I said, someone comes into town and plants a sign below Judy's office that is offensive to a bunch of people.
So, that is regulated by virtue of precluding signs on borough property.
So, we do preclude signs on borough property.
So, my comment relative to this is, this section is not appropriate. What I discussed with Jill is striking this section, we're getting planners to look at our master plan and basically do an overhaul as to what rules are with regard to signage. With regard to prohibitions, that's where we should approach it. We should have our planners look at it and come up with a comprehensive plan as to the prohibitions we're going to implement. And we do have prohibitions in the ordinance, but these specifically apply to political signs, and it's violative of Reed v. Gilbert. It's deemed to be a First Amendment infringement.
So, what we're doing is just eliminating that section at this point, and then looking at everything else. But this is blatantly in violation, because we're saying you're, we're blatantly in violation on the political signs.
If you look at D in this, what we all received prior to, it kind of clarifies it all, that you can have it, providing you have a permit, and you can have only for a temporary period, and you have to have a permit, and it covers all signs, banners, flags, and everything.
There are supplementary sections that address the other issues, yes.
So, if a local person has a business, and they want to put a political sign, they're allowed or not, they're not allowed?
They are allowed.
They are allowed.
They are allowed.
Not now, you know.
On their business.
How about it's on our sidewalk in front of their business?
That's a different story, because that's signage on your property, it's not being regulated by virtue of political content. It's going to be regulated by virtue of, precluding signage on your property.
So, what about our islands?
Yeah, because we have laws about signs now, so it would just fall under that.
Because if you look at F, F says signs on borough property. And then if you look at E, E is political signs, and then goes into F. We're just saying E, get rid of E.
Right, D addresses flags and banners and permitting for those.
And we're not touching D, we're not touching F, because all that needs to really be looked at. But, but E is blatantly, is blatantly a problem.
Right, violates-
So, we just remove that-